I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, welcome to the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board meeting, June 15, 2017. We'll do a roll call.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Cagnon.
Here.
David Hardy.
Here.
Neil Choman.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
Here.
Okay. So, the first order of business is to approve of the minutes from our May 18 meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, revisions? No? Okay. Well, I have one thing I did, I have one thing I do want to mention. When we were talking about stonecrop and about the parking and about, you know, handicap spaces and things like that, the language was worrying me a little bit because handicap seems like a very old-fashioned term to me, so I looked up some language. And there's, the disability rights movement advocates that we use the word accessible rather than handicapped or disabled. And so, I'd kind of like to see if as moving forward, we could think about that. And, you know, it's just, it's respectful. I have a little webpage that I'm going to send around to the board, just defining terms, because I thought it might be helpful. And that's all I have to say about that. So, if there aren't any changes to the minutes, I'll take a motion to approve them.
So, you can use it as an adjective, as an accessible, or an entry, successful.
Yeah. So, for example, let me, sorry, my phone is very small. So, I could make it bigger, but then I probably can't see it. So, let's see. "When talking about places with accommodations for people with disabilities, use the term 'accessible' rather than 'disabled' or 'handicapped.' For example, refer to an accessible parking space rather than a disabled or handicapped parking space, or an accessible bathroom stall rather than a handicapped bathroom It's another point they made. This is from the Kids Action Network. "It's okay to use words or phrases such as disabled, disability, or people with disabilities when talking about disability issues. When talking about people without disabilities, it's okay to say people without disabilities." But, the idea is just to be, you know, to not draw a distinction between normal or healthy and disabled, but more, you know, people who are, need some sort of accommodation, some accessibility. So, anyway, I'll send this around to everybody and, you know, we can, you can, you know, do whatever you like. But, I just thought I'd bring it up because it's something that struck me when we were talking about it.
Somebody wrote a letter to the editor, I think it was in The Current or in the PCNR, and they'd made it, made just that point about the planning board, having watched our, having watched the replay. So, yeah, it's been noticed.
Okay. So, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I voted. Okay. So, so, the first order of business tonight is index industrial design, 1602 Route 9 in Garrison. Do you read this or do I?
You read that. I just do the public notices.
Okay. "The applicant is seeking approval for a proposed two-story steel building addition with a full basement, storage, and garage for adjacent existing building. The applicant has just received the ZBA approval for the proposed addition." So, you're up. I think there's a microphone over here.
I'm back from zoning. And, Kim, just a, just a minor correction. It's not going to be a steel building. It's a masonry, it's a masonry building. So, since our last meeting, I was in front of the planning board, we went off to zoning. As you said, we've got our approval for the variance on the lot coverage. On May 15, we resubmitted, or we revised our drawings to address Ron's April 10 comments from your site visit. So, there's a number of, you know, revisions on the drawings, mainly details and lot coverage issues. And there's the Graymore easement, which is now identified. We have, you know, the extensive impervious areas identified. We've also moved ahead with some, you know, other minor revisions. We've eliminated the basement that we were discussing initially in the building. So, now, it's just, you know, the square footage is, I mean, the footprint is the same, it's just, there's nothing underneath it. So, that's it. So, hopefully, we can move ahead and get some approval to have our public hearing.
So, Ron, do you have anything?
The board has a technical memorandum from my office revealing the latest plans.
As the applicant indicates, he's now received the ZBA variance that was required before the board could act on the matter. Necessary referrals have been done. Putnam County Planning has responded through the 239-M referral. There's some technical comments that remain to be resolved, but as the applicant indicates, the next step in this process would be to schedule a public hearing on the matter.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions? No? So, the only question that I have is in the, on page three of the site plan application. It says that you're not in the Aquifer Overlay District, but I think the whole town is in the Aquifer Overlay District. So, that would just be a correction. That should be a yes. And I think that was my only question. So, are we prepared to entertain a motion to have a?
I just had one more, and forgive me if this was something that's been discussed already. Mr. Grasshaw, is there a change, I guess this is for Ron also, is there, is there a change in the parking requirement with the increased square footage of the new building?
No.
Okay.
He's identified occupancy. That was one question the board had previously. He's now, now identified that, I think there will be no change in occupancy.
No.
It's more a house and.
Because it's warehouses and garages and that kind of stuff.
Okay. Anybody else? Neil, anymore?
No.
No, that's it. So, we should entertain a motion to hold a public, schedule a public hearing?
So, move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it, right?
I don't think the last time they were here, that the board made any kind of a determination regarding SEACRA. I don't think you typed it as an action. I think you, don't think you determined whether or not to treat it as an unlisted or, or, excuse me, to coordinate or uncoordinated review. I'd suggest that the board adopt a resolution saying it's an unlisted action, that you're going to undertake an uncoordinated review.
Because we already have the Putnam County Planning?
That doesn't really play into it, but because they're not a permitting agency. The zoning board is though, but they already made a determination, including a SEACRA determination. So, there's really no reason to coordinate.
Okay. I'm, sorry, I'm going to ask you this again, Ron. Did you hear back from the Garrison Fire Department?
Sorry.
Did you hear back from the Garrison Fire Company?
No. We did, we did issue notice to them.
Okay. Okay. So, then, we need to have a motion to declare it an unlisted action?
And that you're going to conduct an uncoordinated review.
And that's one motion, right?
That's all one motion.
Okay. So, someone make a motion that we're going to declare this an unlisted action under SEACRA with an uncoordinated review.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, that's SEACRA. So, now, we would schedule a public hearing for our July meeting. And did we make, someone made that motion before?
We voted on it.
We voted on it already. Do we have to do it again?
Nope.
Okay.
I didn't recall you voting, but I guess you did.
Did we? I'm sorry.
I didn't recall you voting, but I guess you did.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Okay.
Three minutes ago. Maybe we could play back the tape.
We're too, we're too far apart now. You see, we're used to being jammed closer together, so now, we can't hear each other.
I think it's very echoey in this, whoever the landlord is, better get their sound.
Really? I know. We've been trying. Okay. So, good. So, public hearing for the July meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, number two on the agenda is the Rockman Berquist, 67 Old West Point Road in Garrison.
Did you say for the July meeting?
No. For the July, the July meeting.
This is going to be.
That'd be a good meeting.
It's July 20th, is the third.
I don't see anyone here to represent this next item on the agenda. So, I guess we will skip it.
I don't see him either.
Do we need, do we need, we would need him to be here, would we not, Ron? We would need James to be here to represent.
It's a decision of the board. You have a technical review from my office. In the latest submittal, they've made a, provided a variety of more details on the technical plans. They've now defined that they'll prosecute the project in two stages. Their initial, the overall project, just so the board remembers, is going to be a four-bedroom main residence with an attached garage, a detached two-car garage, a separate three-bedroom guest cottage, and a pool and poolhouse. And all of those items were identified during the board's recent site walk in April. So, since that time, as I said, they've revised the plans. The applicants now recognize that the, the main house itself will be in phase two. They're going to build the guest cottage, poolhouse, and the detached garage in the initial construction. And then, when that's in the ground, they'll proceed with the main house. So, that's the main thrust that came out of the latest plans. There's one thing that's missing for the application to be deemed complete, and that's a no violations letter from the CEO. I anticipated that Mr. Hartford would have brought that in tonight, but, but maybe he wasn't aware that the meeting location had changed. I don't know.
Is it the Butterfield Library?
I emailed him. I emailed his office.
But, in any, in any event, his, there are some, the referrals, again, for this project have been resolved. The referral to Garrison Volunteer also went out, but there has been no response, which is often the case. But nevertheless, the applicant has added to his plans on the entrance drive, which is a very long drive. I think there's three separate locations where they provided widened areas for emergency vehicle passing. So, they've tried to acknowledge the need for that, which the board had talked about during their site visit. And so, the plans have been resolved or revised to address that. There's some technical issues to resolve, but again, this project likewise is at a point where you might wish to consider scheduling a public hearing, conditioned upon receipt of that no violations letter to make the application complete.
So, I have a quest, I have one question, which is on the, in the documents, it talks about also referring things to the Continental Village Fire Department. But we did, should we be notifying them as well? It's kind of within their general area.
Again, it went to Garrison, I can tell you that. If it should, I can make the referral. You obviously have more than a month for them to respond to your next meeting, if you want that to, to happen.
I think it might be, you know, a good idea. So, what do we, what do we think about scheduling a public hearing?
I see that as being, their absence here is not an impediment to hearing the voice of the public, and it's not a problem. I do think, well, it shouldn't be the applicant's fault that the fire department hasn't responded, that that driveway is exceedingly long and having an opinion of a professional group as to whether it's sufficiently protected and wide, et cetera, is an important safety measure. So, I'd like to make sure that we at least reach out one more time.
Also, another question I have is, so, the second phase of this house is six years later. I was just wondering, I was wondering if that was a typo on the application, because the first one says 2017, and the next one is 2023.
I didn't see that in the application materials, but the.
You know when they're getting your next paycheck or something?
I don't know. 2023. I just thought that was a very big gap. It's in the phasing.
A condition of any approval of the board is that they have to pull a building permit within two years.
Right.
Then, it's a matter for the building department to monitor the progress of the work.
So, so, that's kind of, and so, saying that they're going to be done, that they're going to be done in 2023 doesn't, if we, doesn't give them a pass on that two-year.
No. I don't think so.
They can say that they're going to do their work whenever they want to say they're going to do their work. That has no effects, no effect on their, their site plan approval. It, you grant it or you don't grant it. Once you grant it, they have to, as Ron says, pull a building permit in order to vest their rights, or it'll expire and they'll have to come back.
Do they understand that?
Yeah, will that be explained to them?
He's an architect. Very Sphinx-like of you. Maybe we could be generous and be proactive and.
Tell them.
Tell them.
Yeah. If the board acts favorably on the application, they actually receive a copy of your approval resolution, which contains all of that language.
Including expiration date.
What says he has two years to pull a building. Right.
Well, maybe we should just tell.
So, would anyone like to make a motion, I guess, to schedule a public hearing? Do we want to have two public hearings in the same night in July?
I don't see a full house on either.
Yeah, I totally agree.
I don't see a lot of protest signs.
I prefer a deal, too.
Ron, how are we on the, how do you feel about it? If they, if they get the sign off from the fire department?
There's a very good possibility you might not see a response, but at least you can acknowledge that you've provided it to another agency. And as I said, you, very typically, and I always make sure the fire department referrals go out timely, so, only lately, I think, only on a few applications in the eight or nine years I've been here, have you seen a response. And they both were recently from North Highlands. Other than that, all the referrals have never been responded to.
So, Steve, are you waiting to tell us we need to do something about SEACRA?
He's stealing my thunder kiss.
Before we schedule a public hearing? Yeah. Okay. I'm learning. I'm learning. You know, it's hard to run this thing.
Put me out of a job.
So, what, it's an unlisted action?
It's exact, well, it's very similar to last, when you come out in the same place. Yeah.
Unlisted and uncoordinated?
It's the way I would do it.
Okay. So, can I get a motion to declare this an unlisted action under SEACRA and with an uncoordinated review?
So, move it.
Neil. Second?
I'll second.
Neil. All in favor? Aye. Okay. And secondly, can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing for our July meeting?
So, move it.
Neil. Second?
Second.
Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, that takes us to Hudson Highlands Reserve, Route 9 and Horton Road, Continued Review, which includes a full environmental assessment and revised preliminary drawings.
Is it on? Well, you have a new submission or an additional submission of engineered drawings that provide the plan and grading for each of the individual lots, for the roads, sewage, all the, at least the collection system, and the, I don't think you have much on the drainage, if anything. That's, that's still being worked on. But, we, limited disturbance has been identified, the lots have been calculated and shown on the map. So, those are all on the black and white prints that you should have all received. Couple of things that happened in the last month. Couple of days ago, Steve Gross and I did a site walk with the conservation board. Two-and-a-half-hour walk. They took, they took a hard look at everything. We discussed, we discussed the whole plan, walked virtually the entire site. I still haven't seen anyone that wants to walk down the hill to the back, to the parking lot. But, we did, we did, we walked around the entire site. This is yet another master plan. It's very similar to what we talked about last month, but it's more complete. I told you last month that we were shortening this cul-de-sac that was heading counterclockwise around the pond, and that's, in fact, has happened. We finished off some housing up in this other cul-de-sac that's at the easterly part of the property. We've added the buildings into scale. And so, we think we've, we've gotten to the point where we've identified virtually everything. We know we have two major pieces of work to do, which are the phasing plan and the Just to run through, the main road comes up from Route 9 and to the northeast, and then it turns to the southeast and goes down and ends at the, at the equestrian center on the southern part of the property. We have an emergency access road over the presented driveway, which will, which will get us out. We have an emergency access road where Harold Lyons had built the road into the property a few years ago, that, that will connect the end of our road to Horton Road. And I think it's important that, somebody made the observation, I don't know who, but it was such a good observation that it would probably be mine in a couple of months. But, at any rate, the emergency access gets us out to Horton Road if we can't get out Route 9 or can't get out eastbound. But, what it also does is it gets an emergency access for the people on Horton Road that don't have one. So, it works, that works both ways. Other than that, we've also submitted a suggested Part II, I'm thinking of fully AF, which has a suggested Part II and the beginnings of Part III. It's fairly thick and fairly comprehensive. The Part II I did, I sent it off to Steve Gross, who edited it and, and made comments. And then, we put together a suggested Part III. We are expecting that you will review Part II and come up with any additions, or maybe even a deletion or two from the, from the proposed, from the impacts we've identified, and to give us the opportunity to go back and flesh out that, the, those additional questions that you may rise, raise. But, it's, we think we're at that point, and we're anxious to, to, to get that going and get that on a scheduled completion. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
So, Ron, do you have, do you want to go first?
Yes. The applicant indicates the, the plans have evolved. I think they've attempted to be responsive to prior issues that the board or your consultants have raised. They've now provided you a, an expanded EAF document, and I think everybody understands that pursuant to SEACRA, the Part 1 EAF is, is the applicant's to fill out, and that's been presented to you. He's also provided a suggested Part 2 document, a Part 2 EAF. That pursuant to the regs clearly is the board's document. That's a document you have to review and be satisfied that it accurately provides a level of detail that you believe necessary. That, in fact, may identify areas that require further study. As, as Glenn indicates, he's attached significant information to the EAF documents you have, but that all needs review. Susan and I have been through informal discussions to date. The expectation is that before your next meeting, we'll have our technical comments on this entire submittal, the plans themselves, as well as the EAF document, for you to review and then be prepared to hopefully go through the EAF in detail. But, that would be your next step.
Any questions from the board?
I have one question for Glenn. I'm trying to get up to speed with the project and such and reviewing the, the plans.
Oh, no. Sorry. On the common disposals field by the, I guess, the equestrian center, let's call it, isn't that, now, there's a turnout for the horses there? Is that an overlay of that?
The septic system will be under that, yes. And that's it. It's just a matter of how you construct it.
Again, I have to. Can you repeat that one more time? The septic field is underneath where the horses are having their outdoor arena? As I was reviewing the plans, I saw the common sanitary disposal system in the area that's designated for now what shows on this plan, the outdoor arena. So, basically, it's going to be over that sanitary disposal area.
Yes, that's correct. And it's, and my response was it's just something, it depends on how you construct it. You can put it under, you can put a septic system under a parking lot.
If it's done.
If it's, if it's done a certain way.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we haven't seen any, any indication of where the trails are going to be.
There are trails on here, and it's been, and we're really working on the trails again, because it's, two things have come to our attention in terms of the discussion, that trails cross the, cross the stream, so that could involve a wetland permit. We've, here, up until now, we told you we don't need a wetland permit, but we may need a wetland permit for that. We're, we're looking at alternatives to avoid that impact. And, yeah. Turn back to the, to the site visit with the conservation board. They did make a comment with regard to the, with regard to the dam. They feel some of the trees ought to be taken down off the dam. Mr. Kingsley, who you all know is a tree expert, in particular, was concerned with the number of trees on the dam, and if they did get ripped up in a storm, toppled in a storm, it could cause a breach. So, we're going to look into that.
Where is the dam?
The dam is, essentially, it's parallel with Horton Road as you run in front of that. It's right, it's right at the south end of the lake.
And is that what makes the lake? I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't on the site visit. Where were you? I didn't get that close to the lake. So, is that what creates the lake, that dam?
Yeah. This is an artificial lake.
Okay.
And I should, I should tell you a little bit about our, our meeting with the town board. We did meet with the town board. We have made a petition to change the zoning of the M property, and a couple of other things I'm thinking that I forgot about here. We, we have made a petition to zone, rezone the M property to the RR district, so it would all be consistently zoned. That petition was handed in. During that workshop meeting that we attended, we, we did present basically the entire plan to, to the town board, so that they, they're, they've been brought up to speed. There's, there are now 27 lots on this piece of property, 25 houses, which we know where that, we still have that one unit issue that we're talking about. The 26th. The 26th lot is the commercial property, the office building that used to be PemCorps, we've added that into the plan, because we've moved the road onto that property, and further away from Clove Creek, so we thought it appropriate to include that for the purpose of changing, moving the lot line of that lot over, so it wouldn't, so the road would be part of the subdivision, and not on a, Eastman on a commercial lot. And as you, the earlier plans had the road approximately 50 feet towards, closer to Clove Creek, and of course, the 27th lot is the big open area, that's going to be a lot.
So, I'm sorry, I don't think I understood in the past that PemCorps was on this, I guess maybe I didn't register that it was part of this.
Yeah, I mentioned it a couple of times during the meetings, there is, there were two issues, there's two issues with putting the road on the frontage of this piece of property. One of those issues is the proximity to Clove Creek, which, we can make it further from Clove Creek, which helps, and the other is the guide rail that protects the bridge, or protects the bank down from the, by the bridge. DOT doesn't want us to disturb that, they want to have that much guide rail in place, and we would have to remove it and rebuild it, and they're not, they would rather that we not do that. So, and a couple of years ago now, Mr., the Horton Road LLC acquired that building from the Cares, who own ESP.
Yeah, I just saw this a lot, I didn't see it as a building. So, so in seeking to change this zoning, you're seeking to change it so that's office building is in a rural residential zoning?
No, the office, there's actually three zones right here. There's the RR, which is the bulk of the property in one form or another, there's a small patch of M-zone, basically, it's on that side hill that's falling down to Clove Creek, that's manufacturing, and the PemCorps building, the Moore Cement, J-Mark Jewelers, that's all commercial zone.
HC?
I'd have to look, it's, I'd probably HC, but it's, but I'd have to look. So, we simply want to move the property line over, and the easiest way to do is to incorporate that lot into the subdivision, so that the lot line change happens when the subdivision gets approved. It has occurred to us, and we would, we would seek your advice, is to amend our petition to have the roadway zoning also changed, so take a little bit out of the commercial and put it in the RR. We may do that, if there's a strong feeling one way or the other, we would go with the strong feeling.
Okay, so that's a town board?
That's a town board decision.
Okay.
But it is incorporated, that Mr. Gob explained to the town board, and I think he mentioned it last month here, that zoning change petition, which we had talked about last month, has to be incorporated into this Seeker review, because it's all part of this whole overall approval.
Okay. So, just to go back, so you were saying that the 26th lot was the office building, what's the 27th lot?
The open area, the 140 acres, or whatever it is, 160 acres.
Okay. And can we just, just for clarity, so you want 25 houses, now how many of those houses are already existing?
One.
Just the Frisenda house?
No, just the Omar house, or the White House, as you walk up in the driveway on the left. What we did with that, and is, there was concern expressed by the Hudson Highlands Land Trust that we were cutting off a corridor for wildlife to go from the lake, the shortest route to Clove Creek. It's, we don't, we don't agree that that's a necessary corridor, but in order to respond to the concern, we got rid of a house on the west side of the lake, and spread out the houses that are there to provide a fairly wide place where there would be, you know, no improvements, where the animals could make it. It is the shortest distance, and for those who are going from the pond to Clove Creek, it's probably the fastest, as they will have speed up as they go down that hill.
So, the original, let's, I just want to review, the original houses that were there, how many of those are there? How many buildings are there?
Serviceable buildings, there are two. There's the 1825 barn, which has been identified as architecturally significant and architecturally important. That is going to be part of the common facility, perhaps the meeting room, perhaps the offices, but it's going to be redesigned for an adaptive reuse of that barn. There is a 1920 house, the White House, that you approached from Horton Road on the left, that's, at least, I haven't been inside it, but on the outside, it looks like it's in pretty good shape, it's well maintained and well painted on the outside. That, when we got rid of the, that was originally going, that was originally going to be part of the common facilities, but in order to create the space over on the west side of the lake that I was talking about, we decided, well, we'd make this house one of the units, one of the residential units. So, that became one of the lots. There is a small garage associated right next to that house, which will stay. There is, further down the driveway, closer to Horton Road, and right against the driveway, there is a, excuse me, there's a house that is also architecturally significant, but the report also found that it is not serviceable, and it should be taken down. So part of the, when that happens, the dismantling of the house will be, a photographic record will be, will be taken of it as it's being dismantled, so that, that architect, the architectural elements that are considered important can be preserved, but the house is going. There's a couple of others, an old chicken coop, there's an old fallen down barn over here, and towards the southwest part of, just off the southwest part of the lake, there's something of a foundation that looks like somebody had a roof, had a floor, and tar papered over the floor, and lived in this basement, never, I don't think it ever went any further. And then there's, of course, this is the Frisenda house, which is going to be used, it's going to be used as the maintenance facility, but it won't be one of the, it won't be one of the residential units.
And Glenn, the, so we have the farmhouse on the left, and then the barn structure on the right?
Yes.
That has, it's been verified that it's structurally sound, and adaptable to what you want to use it for, was that in this same report?
The, it's, the architectural report said that it is an important architectural, architectural style, is one of a few samples of this 1825 barn construction. There is an addition, that somebody lives in it right now, and it's recommended that it be restored. Whether or not it would be considered a serviceable building right now, it is servicing somebody that's living in it, but the plan is to fix it, and to restore it, and I'm sure, I don't think anybody's put pen to paper in terms of designing something, but that's the plan.
But we have, at least, engineers take that it is, we can do something with it, you're not going to get halfway through with it, and then find out that it has to come down also.
Well, we can take care of that. Sure.
That's the barn.
That's the barn.
That's the barn with the studio or something.
It's got a studio, that's an addition.
It's a nice little structure, but you can't always assume that you're going to be able to do what you want to do with it. Glenn, my other question is about, it goes back to the dam, do we have a, does the New York State DEC have a number for the dam?
Yeah, that's in your, that's in the EAF, all that stuff is in the EAF.
And the classification is?
I don't know what the classification is, I've forgotten, but it's, it's in the EAF, there's a section on it.
And we'll have something in the homeowners agreement eventually, because they do have to file, I think, five and 10, or I think it's 10-year engineer's assessments, depending on the classification, the homeowners association would be responsible for that?
Yeah, they will own it.
Okay, so they'll...
The homeowners association will own the lake.
Well, they'll have some sort of guarantees, that they'll be doing their due diligence to maintain the dam, and keep the paperwork on that.
Well, that will certainly be part of their responsibility. That's as far as I can take it, I can't tell you how responsible somebody is going to be 20 years from now.
You can't speak for an association that doesn't exist yet, I understand that.
But that will be provided for.
We're thinking about it.
Mm-hmm. So, I would very much like to get, target date for getting this review of Part II done, and I would suggest that it might be appropriate to have a workshop for that particular, that particular purpose. And it's, I was frankly hoping that somebody, that it would have been reviewed by tonight, but I understand that that's, you're not ready to do that, so.
I have a few things. Um, yeah, so Ron and I spoke yesterday, and, you know, we don't have a memo or a review right now, but I did want to, I think it's a good idea to have a workshop, and once we do our review, once everybody is able to digest what was submitted, in order to move this forward. But while you're doing that, I'd like to recommend that everybody looks at the code again, because every step of the way, it becomes sort of clearer, and different things that are being looked at and analyzed. So I just wanted to point you to a couple of sections that might be applicable, and, you know, questions might arise from this, but I'm looking at 175-19B, where it says "A town encourages conservation subdivisions as an alternative to conventional subdivision."
Slow, slow, slow.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Can you repeat that number?
I'll read it very slowly. 19B.
You start citing, yeah.
Conservation subdivision.
Yep.
Period. Okay. "The town encourages conservation subdivision as an alternative to conventional subdivisions. In conservation subdivisions, units are clustered or sited on a portion of the property most suitable for development." So the word clustered, what does that mean? Is this clustered? I think that's a question for discussion. "While leaving substantial portions as undevelopable, undeveloped open space. Conservation subdivisions may include a variety of lot sizes." It says it may include, it doesn't direct to include, but the fact that these are all the same lot sizes, is something that the developer has the ability to make things bigger and smaller, and that's part of the whole theory of clustering, is that you're not, you're not dictated to one size, which gives you the pattern of the traditional subdivision. So, the other thing that this says, I'll continue on, so conservation subdivisions may include a variety of lot sizes, ranging from farm or estate lots to small hamlet-sized lots, and what they're saying is on one property, that, that's what they're saying can happen. Conservation subdivisions result in preservation of contiguous open space, and this is the part that I really have been hoping that at some point, we would see contiguous open space, instead of the fragmentation of that space beyond the pond, beyond the cul-de-sac next to the pond. It is fragmented, there's, that's the definition of fragmented, there's a roadway between the ponds and that area, so it breaks off the contiguous. "While there is better circulation for open space, for people to travel around, a paved road blocks off the animals that are lowest to the ground." So that's one thing, it says, that's pretty clear in the code, that that's what the point is, and allow compact development in a more walkable neighborhood, walkability. We really haven't heard much about that, you know, people could walk on the streets, where they're going to, I don't know, people could walk on the pathways, of course, they're more like horse trails and hiking trails, and if you, if you then go to one other place that I noted in that vein, in the idea of walkability, if you turn to 175-20D, is there a number there? It's on page 17577.
Arrangements of lots.
Arrangements of lots, right. "Lots shall be arranged in a manner that protects the land conservation value and facilitates pedestrian and bicycle circulation." We don't see any facilitation of pedestrian and bicycle circulation here yet, so that's another thing, I'm sure there will be other things that will come up as we read through this again, that we want to check off, that have been recognized in the plan. Then one other thing that has been mentioned, I believe in the memo from February from the Hudson Highland Trust, and I wanted to point this section out on the page before that, so we're at, gosh, this is so hard. It's number five there, where it's talking about the density. It's B5, yeah. 20-B-5, it says, "If the planning board has reasonable basis to believe that a number of units that would result from a yield plan would be substantially less than the number allowed from a density formula, it may require the submission of a yield plan, which shall be the basis for determination of allowable counts." So that is up to you guys to decide as well.
So can you talk a bit about that, because to have a view about having, whether a yield plan would yield, I would have to actually know how a yield plan is done, and since we have not done the conservation subdivision before, I don't have an instinct about whether a yield plan would have fewer. So that's a catch, that is a definition of a catch 22.
Well, I think Ron's probably a better person to say whether he feels like it will or not, but that is something we should either analyze ourselves, or ask the applicant to analyze, to...
It's a very good question, and I, as you know, I have struggled for, I've struggled through many of these conversations about the actual count from the density.
Right.
I heard, I heard tonight 27, we had a discussion about 24, we've talked, I've seen Ron's calculations, which can lead you to 23, whether the yield plan is, whether that has led me to say whether we need a yield plan or not, I know, I feel like, I just need, I need to understand again how we got up to 27 tonight. So I, that confusion, from all the analyses, which I deeply appreciate, because the analysis last time, and your office's review of that analysis is very helpful, but it would be great if we could get some guidance about whether a yield plan is required, I understand there is substantial amount of work to create that, and yet, given, as is the burden on this board, to do this right, as it's the first time, I want to make sure we get this right. Do you have any opinions, Ron and/or Susan, about whether we do need to ask for a yield plan at this point?
Again, as you say, that this is a, this is a new realm for the board to be in, so...
And right for you, Ron, a little bit, yeah?
I've been through this ordinance before, with other localities, what is sometimes done, if the board is uncomfortable with mathematical calculation, is they do seek from the applicant, some understanding through the layout of a yield plan, just an overlay of what zoning would permit, independent of the calculation. That's something we can seek from the applicant as part of this overall process, and then that can be analyzed as well.
And one of the things, I think that if there was a positive declaration, that would probably be one of the alternatives that was requested to be analyzed.
Steve, what's the, sorry, I'm sorry, Kim, if you don't mind, Steve, what is the definition of a reasonable basis to believe? That is the operative instruction here on page 17576.
Well, it's just that, if you have proof that would provide a rational basis, or some, this issue came up at the beginning of this application, and at that time, it was said, look, if it looks like it's going to be helpful to the board, if it's something you want, you can require a yield plan. I don't have a problem, I don't think the applicant would have a problem providing it to you.
I think the applicant would have a problem with making a decision three years into the process, and with the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been spent preparing the plan so far.
Well, just in terms of the number of dwellings you can have.
Read what you have to do for a yield plan. The definition of a yield plan is basically designing a whole other subdivision, a whole other subdivision through with drainage, with sewage, with everything, and if that were the case, that is a decision that should have been made early on, before you put through the conservation analysis and all this other, all this stuff that we've done. So the applicant will...
So the applicant would object to it. And I'm sorry, the difference between Ron's calculation of 24 units and ours at 25, it's one unit different. This plan shows 25 units. It shows 27 lots. One of those lots is the commercial lot, which has been added for the purpose I explained of adjusting the lot line. The 27th lot is the open area. You have to have, it has to have a definition, so it becomes Lot 27. I hope that clarifies.
But not a dwelling unit?
It's not a dwelling unit. There are 25 dwelling units on the plan.
Inclusive of the, not inclusive of the existing homes?
It's inclusive of this existing home, the old 1920 house that we're going to put a lot around and make that one of the lots. It is not inclusive of the Fresenda house, which is going to become a maintenance building.
And the other two buildings, one of which is going to be raised, and one of which I wasn't sure of, what you said was going to happen.
That's the barn, that is going to be part of the common facilities, perhaps a meeting room, a clubhouse kind of thing.
I would love, I know we were talking about the yield plan, I'd like to note a conversation about whatever we're calling a meeting house and other, I assume they're termed accessory buildings and such, and what the rules and limits are for that type of structuring, because it sounds like there are multiple additional buildings on the property that may not be dwelling units, but are commercial in nature of some sort.
Isn't there also housing for the horse staff?
The horses, yes.
Yes. So.
No, she said the horse staff.
The horse staff. How does that figure in here?
There will be, there will be a sleeping quarter for the person that has to stay overnight in the barn. It won't be a residential unit.
It doesn't count as a dwelling unit even though someone's sleeping in there?
No. Counts as a dwelling unit when you have a kitchen and that kind of, when you have, when somebody's living in there.
One area that you might want to consider within the code, and we're just, you know, touching back to what the law is, it says in 175-21A, "Any development permitted in connection with the setting aside of open space land shall not compromise the conservation value of such open space land." So I think that's a question to be asked. Will, if that's part of the open space land, are those buildings and the uses compromising the conservation?
Well, it depends if they're being considered part of the 80% requirement.
Exactly.
Whatever the, 77%.
Right. If they go beyond 80%, then perhaps there's a way of working that out to keep that conserve value of 80% that's required by the code.
It's, it, there are, there are rules with regard to that, and those were taken into consideration. There's a minimum separation for the primary building of 100 feet. That actually applies to the units, but we've applied it to the barn. We put the barn in that on clearly developable land, and we, so we've accounted, we've accounted for that, and it's, it's something less than 80% that actually has to be preserved.
Restate that. We are still at less than 80% from the last calculation, correct?
Yes, and we don't have to be at 80%. That's a misstatement.
Okay. Let's correct the statement, then. What's the?
Correct.
You're at 77% or something like that when you add the other section?
Right. But when you, when you count, there's, this land over here, the former Fresenda land in northeast corner, has a different percentage. It has a 60% coverage.
Right, that's right. But when you add it together, the average was supposed to be 77% or something like that. I don't have it in front of me.
Something like that. I'm not sure what the number is either.
So, it seems to me that a workshop would be extremely helpful.
Yeah.
Because I think we have a lot of things that we, you know, just want to know. I still want to know about what a trail is, in terms of like, what kind of building, you know, like, is a trail for, are trails for horses like carriage trails? Or are they like hiking trails? You know, because that's pretty steep stuff, and that could be a lot of disturbance as well, and I don't know if that's included in your calculations here. I, I'm very interested in the amount of, if you're going to have 40 horses, the amount of manure that's going to, you know, I'd like to know what the plans are to make sure that that doesn't end up in the pond, you know, because we know what storms are like, and we know what stormwater is like, and all of that. So, does anybody else want to say anything?
Parking we didn't talk about yet, for those who visit the horses and trailers and such, and at least I don't think we have to an extent, and whether that is still counted as open space, or that is a usage that has to be considered elsewhere.
I think we have a lot of good, a lot of questions, a lot of good questions. I also think it's fair to the applicant to have us workshop them and make them as concise as we can. We don't want to, you know, we want to make it clear what we're looking for. And so, Steve, is there, are there any procedural issues with us workshopping this and then communicating it to the applicant outside of the forum, outside of the board, outside of the meeting?
Well, there's no problem with communicating with the applicant. Your workshop's got to be, comply with the open meetings law is all. You'll have to notice the meeting and, you know, hold it open to the public, as far as that goes. It's not a public hearing, you understand, but they can observe.
Okay.
I mean, unless you're going to have less than a quorum, in which case you can do it as closed.
It'll have, typically, when we do workshops, it's a public meeting.
Okay. But communication to the applicant?
There's no problem.
No problem?
No problem. Either do it through Ron or...
They'd be there.
Okay.
Even better.
I was thinking about, I was thinking, we would meet separately, but no.
We have to meet in public.
Okay.
Kim, could I just touch up two things?
Sure, sure.
Glenn, at the town board meeting, we talked a little bit about lot count, and you'd indicated that the applicant was thinking at least that if they don't wind up with the 25 lots as of right, that they might ask for a bonus as far as the lots based on, is that their position, or?
Yes, that's our position, that the, providing public access to the property, to the conserved property makes us eligible for a bonus. Your decision is the board's decision whether or not we get that, but, so, we're considering the, we're still considering the public access.
Right, but the bonus would only be sought to get the 25th lot. You wouldn't be seeking a 26th or any, or would you? I don't know.
Well, no, not, no. We'd be happy with the 25 if it's determined that the 24 is the maximum, and we have, but we are eligible for the 25th, we'd seek it. We'd ask for that consideration for that bonus lot.
Okay, so that's something.
We're not thinking of it as a 26th lot. We had it at 29 with a maximum, and we, we just, it was clear that we weren't going to get that, so we took off four of the lots at that point.
Lots or dwelling units?
Dwelling units.
Well, just, that's one more thing the board's going to have to analyze as it goes through this, because if it turns out that it's, that Ron's number is correct, and 24 is the as-of-right number, then you're going to be asking them, should you get the bonus? And you're going to provide your reasons then, and they'll make a decision on that.
And the alternative is to drop to the 24.
Well, yeah, yeah. The other thing is, at the end of the last meeting, an issue came up regarding the impacts of having 40 horses, you know, up to 40 horses at least on the property as part of the, as part of the equestrian center. And I provided the board with some information as to why that's an agricultural use, and the extent to which, you know, they can analyze it. And one of the ways they could analyze that is under SECR. And, you know, I don't want to go too far out of my backyard, I'm not a engineer or a planner or anything, but I did read through the EAF, and I didn't see in the Part III anything about how the equestrian center is going to be run, or the trails, or livestock management, or anything like that. And I mean, you know, it's up to the applicant, of course, what they put in their Part III. I just suggest that maybe submitting some information along those lines might go a long way toward, you know, clearing things up and as to whether there's going to be impacts from that or not.
Aye.
Anything?
There's one final ask, which is pursuant to Glenn's discussion of the conservation board going, doing a fairly thorough hike, and I hope no one got as hurt as this group did, and the muscle aches and back aches that you and others.
Ticks.
Oh, ticks, my God. My tick bite just finally started healing up from that hike.
I have mine.
I have a memory of our trip every day. I would like the conservation board to make an appeal to them, a referral to them for a note or discussion of their findings from that. I assume they would do that anyway, but I'd like to see if they, I'd like to formally request their findings from that discussion. And I'd like to make a less formal request of the Hudson Highlands Land Trust to do the same from the EAF if they've received such a copy, given that they play a quasi-official role in many of the components of the zoning code.
Yeah, with respect to that, both the CB and Hudson Highlands Land Trust have been given the full package that the board is reviewing as well.
So, but can we ask for, for them to respond, you know, to tell us what they think?
I've had informal conversations with Michelle and with Max with the CB, and expect that both will be providing written comments, as they have before.
At the end of our tour, I was successful and unsuccessful. I asked them if they would sit down and basically go through the Part II of their, as if they were completing Part II, and they said they would do that and give us their comments. They also, when I asked, they said the bulk of their comments will probably be within the February letter that you've already received from them. They did say there would be some more.
Yeah, it'd be great if they took it and, obviously, amended what they've already written.
Well, because it's changed since February. I mean, it's changed substantially since February. We don't have that road that we had that was difficult to climb over.
The plan has changed substantially, yes. And I was, so I was successful there, I was unsuccessful, seeing how it'd been the fifth time I've walked people through this. I tried to collect a nickel from each of them, but I was unsuccessful.
Well, 20 times five is, as best as I understand, a dollar. So on behalf of me and my fellow colleagues, my colleague, there you go.
So, do I need to make a motion to have a workshop, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Schedule it. You want a date and a time, and you want direction, Linda, to publish notice of it.
Okay. So, who would like to make a motion that we have a workshop?
I'll make that motion.
David, who's second?
Second.
Neil Zuckerman. So now we could pick a date. It has to be at least two weeks from now, because it has to go in the paper, correct? So, that would be the 6th of July, the 13th of July. Our next meeting is the 20th of July, so it would have to be, I would, that's a Thursday, so, but it doesn't have to be on a Thursday.
Your day one.
Yeah.
So, what's the date, 20th of July?
So, the next, the next board meeting is the 20th of July.
Correct.
Yes.
You might want to aim for the, we're going to 13th.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
The week of the 10th, oh, you mean the week of the 10th?
Yes, the week of the 10th.
10th to the 14th.
And if we want to, we, I don't know what the town board, I mean, what the town hall is like. If we want to meet here, Monday night and Tuesday night are not available, so it would have to be Wednesday or Thursday night.
I would request Thursday night.
So that would be Thursday the 13th?
Don't you have a?
Does that work for everybody?
That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, so, so let's.
Thursday the 13th?
Thursday the 13th of July, make them, but at 7 o'clock, 7:30? 7:30?
7:30.
7:30. So, do we need to make a motion to direct Linda to publish it? Okay, so who would make that motion to direct Linda to publish that we will be meeting on the 13th of July, Thursday, at 7:30 in this building? Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Neil, second?
Second.
David Hardy. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay. So that's it for, are we done?
Yeah, Susan and I will endeavor to get our comments completed by the prior Friday, so that the board can see those comments well in advance of the 13th.
Okay.
Will Hudson Highlands be in that workshop also?
Anyone can be, anyone can come. It's a public meeting.
Can I come back to Neil's question, or Neil's point?
Mm-hmm.
Moment, you were describing, I think, creating a concise, maybe written list of questions? Is that what you were alluding to?
Yeah, it was coming to that forum with, with, right, with some concise questions to start talking about it, and then, just sort of, actually just to expedite things. And I was unsure how much of that work you're allowed to do outside of public.
I'm not sure I got a clear answer, because to, someone would have to author, one of us would have to author, or maybe staff would author, some lists. We would then add to it, delete it, circulate among this group, feel like it's a thoughtful enough list to then share, hopefully ahead of time, or at least to walk in the meeting with that list. So what is the method by which we can do written material as a board? We generally do not, in fact, I don't think we've ever done something like that.
I think that Part II of the EAF is precisely designed to do that, to elicit the appropriate questions. So if you go through that Part II and say, "Oh, no, I don't agree with what Watson put down here."
I think you're saying something slightly different, Glenn, which is, I think my colleague is raising a question about, how do we, for your benefit and ours, procedurally create a list, which may be in the sequence of the EAF, may not be, given the conversation tonight, has other things that are not explicitly here, but they are a list of questions or topics? And I'm asking, how do we iterate on something like that as a board, given open meetings law, et cetera? Because that's not...
I think it's going to take a few forms. One is, the intent of the workshop is to review the documents that you have before. And as I just described in advance of that, and available at that meeting for discussion, there's going to be a technical memorandum that's jointly issued from Susan in my office. That's going to identify a wide range of issues, as well as review the Part II EAF, to give you specifics as to what you might want to focus on. The outcome of that review is going to be either agreeing or identifying the concerns that we've raised that you find appropriate, as well as reviewing the specifics of the EAF Part II. So you'll come out of that meeting on the 13th, I suspect, with either agreeing with comments we've raised, or identifying those of our comments which you think the applicant should be focused on, as well as reviewing the specifics of the Part II. That'll, that'll come out of that 13th meeting.
Prior to that meeting, should we just forward questions to you so they could go into a list, so we could have a sort of agenda?
That's fine, as long as you don't circulate among each other, you can send Ron and Susan, whatever it is you want, that's fine.
Should we CC, can we CC everybody?
As long as you're not looking for responses back and forth, yeah. But you cannot, you can't communicate among each other.
I understand that.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Getting, getting the questions to Ron.
Right.
So we're not duplicating, so I'm not asking a question, Neil's not asking the same question, Kim's not asking the same question.
So if he sees you've sent it, he won't send the same question.
Right.
So that requires an enormous amount of restraint.
It does.
So basically, questions and concerns forward to Ron, so he can tab you up?
If you're uncomfortable, then just, don't CC everybody else, just send them direct to Ron, it'll be a little more reading for Ron, but he's got broad shoulders. To get back to the workshop for a second, though, to get back to the workshop, ultimately, you're going to have to focus on the Part II EAF. You're going to have to answer those questions, you know, have they mitigated the impacts, or haven't they mitigated the impacts to the maximum extent practicable? At the workshop, you may not be in a position to answer those questions as you go down the list. Hopefully you will, but I mean, if not, then not. But I think the point should be, and you're certainly going to want to listen to your consultants as far as their thoughts and caveats on it, but at some point, either at the beginning or the end of the workshop, or if not, then at a different workshop, you're going to take that list, and you're going to want to go down it line by line and say, "Large, you know, did they mitigate this impact, or they haven't mitigated this impact?" It may be at the workshop, you look at them, and you hear the comments, and you say, "Well, gee, I need more information in order to answer that question." And if you can articulate to the applicant what it is you need, I think that'll be helpful. But to bring this process to a head, the SECR process, that is, you got to get to that Part II EAF. That's, that's the bottom line.
So anybody else have anything further they'd like to say? No? Okay, so I think, I think we're set. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, I'll make that motion.
Neil, second?
Jack, second.
Dennis? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.